Like to say good morning to everyone watching today. Our chair is absent due to a death in the family and I'll be running the meeting today. With that, I will ask that everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me note that there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act over on the north wall and there is also an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. With that, we will open the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chairman.
Here, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 28th, 2005. Also, Item B, call and meeting and set Tuesday, May 12th, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls of increased value on property. Everyone, please vote. Item C, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that wish to comment on anything on the Board of Equalization, anything of matters of the Board of Equalization that are not already listed on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Is the Board's will to take them as a whole? Is there a motion?
Move approval of resolutions D through H. Do we have, is there need for executive session?
Nothing I'm aware of.
And then I would also include attorneys.
There's motion to second. Roll call. I mean, I want a roll call so bad.
Motion passes.
We'll now move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chairman.
Here, Item 1, minutes and claims. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 28th. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, May 2015.
Second.
There's motion to second. Everyone, please vote.
Motion passes.
Item 2 is the consent agenda. We have 10 items. Is there anyone from the Board wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Item B and Item E be laid over simply because I haven't had a chance to review them and I believe in talking to other commissioners that that's the same. I feel that it's our duty to review contracts before we approve them and so I'd ask those two items to be removed.
Can I make the case for D? D is something we approved previously and it's kind of time sensitive. The only thing that's been made in it is tweaks. For instance, it's for the new Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act. The only thing they did in that respect was change some wording, make it appropriate for the new law. There's no major structure, but if, again, if everybody feels they can, I think it can wait.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I meant to speak with you before the meeting this morning. It's not on the substance necessarily of either of these items. It's just a procedural thing. I'd like, I'd have a comfort level if I actually had an opportunity to review them. That's something they teach you in law school, is don't sign contracts until you have them read.
Okay, got it. Yes, sir.
Did you say there's some time on D that you needed?
Yeah, I thought it wasn't going to be put on this week. I think it could be held off one more week.
It's fine. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's any pressure.
That'd be great. I'd make a motion and then...
Whether Claire's going to...
I have one more I'd like to call.
Oh, okay.
Could I also ask Item C to be pulled from the consent agenda so that I might have stayed?
Okay. I think we've done that one last year.
We did this company.
Yeah, right.
For the record, Item B and D will be laid over one week and Item C is pulled completely. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
Some move. Second.
And there's a motion to approve the agenda item removing B, D, and C. With that, everyone, please vote.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you, when will these be discussed?
Next week, I think.
Will they be discussed at the meeting and then we can either vote on them or lay them over again?
It is, well, just one person wanted, so I'm assuming...
Well, I do too, because I was after the B, the hospice. I've asked questions and didn't get any answers yet on them. So I'd like, you know, before we come in here and have it all presented and vote on it, I'd like to have some discussion about what it is and what the need is for it and so forth.
Okay.
Can we, can we do that next week and then vote on it the following week?
Jim, you don't want to come and is that, is nothing time sensitive on this, is it?
Good morning, Jim Torville, Minister of Douglas County Health Center. The question is what, Commissioner?
Commissioner Boyle.
Mr. Boyle.
Well, my question is, I have questions about the hospice, you know, the need. Where are these people being treated now? You know, are the other hospice systems failing? Are there people who are being served? You know, who's getting the money? We don't like, we're getting anything. And who's making the money off this? Where's it coming from? Creighton CHI, it looks like, is involved in it and I just want to know what's going on. And I did send you, sent some information, some questions, but I never got any answers. So what I'd like to do is discuss it fully before we, before we vote.
Okay.
So that's what I'm, I want to do that next week if we can and then vote on it the following week.
Today, Kim Klein, Kim Klein is with us here. She's the Director for the CHI Allegiant Creighton Hospice and she can answer any questions that you might have, Commissioner.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Kavanaugh, I've, I've read it pretty well. I think I've got some questions. I don't know whether you do or not. Both of us practice law. We have other lives outside of the county.
Understand.
But I did get this read pretty well late at night, a couple nights ago. And actually, before that, I was trying to, anyway, I have a lot of questions about it. So if you want to try to explain it, it's okay with me, but...
Well, we got the lights, so go with your lights.
Commissioner Boyle, what I thought we might do, at least for these, is between now and then, perhaps you and I could sit down with Director Torville and Mrs. Klein and get a briefing on this. It was touched on briefly at the last Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees meeting and I'm just looking for a little more in depth. You're ahead of me in having read them. I haven't actually seen the document. But if we could do that between now and then, that would, I think, be okay with you, wouldn't it, Jim?
That's fine. Your will.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Commissioner Kavanaugh, let me know when you're going to do that. I might, three of us could be in the case.
That'd be swell. And, you know, as far as that goes, Commissioner Rogers, I just need probably to look at the document and get a little bit of a briefing from you on that other item to live with. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question though. Is there, is this a time problem? Is this coming up pretty quickly or what?
We'll work it out. We actually did have a patient that we had...
Can you give your name, please?
Kim Klein. I'm the CHI Allegiant Creighton Health at Home, Director of Home Care and Hospice. We do have potential to, we did actually lose a patient there. We had to sign it over to VNA. So there is a time factor.
Sorry, I can't hear you. We have what? We have patients?
We have had a patient on our service. We thought the contract was done and we had to actually discharge that patient. So there is a little bit of a time factor.
I'm real confused. You're already doing this?
We had one patient for, on service for two days because we thought the contract was signed.
Okay, when you say you had one patient, you've got a patient at Douglas County that you're...
Not anymore. We signed it over to VNA because the contract wasn't passed. Excuse me.
Okay, but you accepted a patient and you were treating them at Douglas County because you thought it was signed?
Correct.
Okay, well, that shouldn't happen.
So learned.
So my understanding, you all, because I think everybody else was at the Board of Trustees meeting when it was discussed, so you all will get together next week and be good, okay?
Yeah, and those Board of Trustees meetings, I pushed for those all to be discussed here in public rather than over at the hospital because, like Jim and I, I mean, those Monday mornings, Mondays are really a bad day for me. I have a hard time getting there because I have to work other, in my law practice. And so that's why, and I know they're videotaped and I, I got one once and I could hardly hear what was going on. So anyway, I just have to ask questions. I've got questions about your switchboard operation that's looming too, so that's another one we want to talk about. So, I mean, there's just things that some of us, you know, we're not full-time. So we try to be, but, so we need information.
Okay, everybody's okay. Think we're good. You all can be doing it, you know, next week. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the vote on the previous motion passed.
Thank you. We do need to vote on Item C. Is there a motion and a second to approve Item C?
Some move.
I was going to move to deny.
Well, I think he wants it, what, removed, don't you, or whatever?
Second.
There's a second.
Motion passes.
Item 3, recognition and proclamations. I will turn it over to Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, we, we lost a beloved and dear friend, Dr. Rothman. And is his family here? Would you please come up? If you, if you don't mind, if you feel comfortable. You can stand at the podium if you'd like. And if anyone wants to take a picture of you or anything while we're doing this or want to come up, we're very informed. They can stand in front of you. They can stand behind us to take pictures or anything. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners hereby resolve, whereas it was with great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and Douglas County Health Center staff learned of the death of the county's medical director, Blaine Bud Rothman, M.D., on April 6th, 2015, at the age of 80. And whereas Dr. Rothman is survived by his wife Judy, his children Sherri Goldberg, Shirin Roskin, I hope I said that correctly. No? Karen?
Karen Rosz...
Karen, okay. Karen Ros...
Roszinski.
Roszinski. Linda Zimmerman, seven grandchildren, and many other family members and friends. And whereas he attended the University of Nebraska College of Medicine and was trained as a forensic pathologist, and whereas in the early 1960s, Dr. Rothman served in the U.S. Air Force as a surgeon, and whereas, starting in 1968, Dr. Rothman assumed the duties of Douglas County, Douglas Deputy Coroner's Physician for Douglas County, which often involved performing autopsies and testifying in high-profile criminal cases. And whereas, as a coroner, he proceeded to dedicate years of service to his community. And whereas, in 1999, Dr. Rothman became the medical director of the Douglas County Health Center and served in that position until his passings. Whereas, he is best known for trustworthiness, intuition, ability to solve puzzling autopsies, and for his dedication in seeking answers to complicated medical questions. And whereas, this board recognizes that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends and come as a great loss to the residents of Douglas County Center. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby commemorates the many decades of public service, service contributions by Dr. Rothman to his community and does hereby extend the Board's most sincere sympathy to his family and friends dated this 5th day of May, 2015.
Is there a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion to second. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I only wanted to add that while I didn't attend a lot of the meetings, it was a wonderful thing when I did attend a meeting that I could. And your husband welcomed me as if I were a long-lost brother, maybe because I was. But he was always so pleasant to me and there was so much more to him than what we heard in this proclamation. I attended the service and saw the many people who attended and he was just a terrific guy, just, nor the way to put it, well-rounded, loving, giving to everybody. So he is really missed and very well-respected. He left a huge footprint. So I just want you to know that from my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to say that I held the doctor in a very high regard. My father was on the county board when he was hired at Douglas County Hospital back in the 1960s and he always spoke very, very, very highly of him. I know from my experience in the public defender's office that many times that his evidence was very instrumental in the criminal justice system down through the decades. And he was a gentleman and a scholar and we were lucky to have him. And you have our deepest sympathies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and it's with great sadness that we have you here today. Dr. Rothman is a longtime personal friend of mine. I can't remember when I first met him, but he was always admirable and always welcoming. If no one else wishes to speak, we would like you to come up and shake our hands and we'd give you, oh, we have to vote first, I'm sorry.
Yes, please vote first and we'd definitely love you to come around.
Thank you, Mike.
Motion passes.
If you'd like to come up and raise your hand if you would, shake your hand. He was a great person. He was a great person. And if the family would like to say anything or someone else would like to say anything, please come to the microphone.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Kraft. We'd like to now go on to Item 4 and that's citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that may have comments on any items that may not be listed on today's agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Morgan. He has a guest here that he'd like to recognize.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I wanted to introduce Billy Clark from Westside Middle School, 8th grade, who is shadowing myself today. They have all of their class going with someone and his mother talked to me about him maybe accompanied me to the county board meeting and so I've introduced him to many of you, Tom Kavanaugh, a clerk, others. So Billy, hopefully someday, you never know, you may be involved in government and appreciate you coming down and good luck to you. So thanks for coming.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you, Billy.
Commissioner Morgan, by shadowing, do you mean being on your dark side?
We'll ignore that last round.
All right.
With that, I'd like to ask that Item 5, we'll just lay that over a week because I think the chair wanted to be here for that since she chairs that committee. So we will hold that over a week and go to Item 6, which is public hearings and Item A on Class 1, number 112081 liquor license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits for Taff LLC Doing Business, A View on the State. We will now open the public hearing on this item. Ma'am?
I am Brandeline Goldap, 5820 North 279th Circle in Valley, and I'm the manager slash whatever my title is today and here for any questions.
Public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to comment during the public hearing? Seeing none, any commissioners? Let's first close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion to second.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, public hearing and resolutions to approve the issuance of revenue bonds by hospital authority number 2 of Douglas County, Nebraska, and hospital authority number 3 of Douglas County, Nebraska for Nebraska Methodist Health Systems, Inc., and the Nebraska Methodist Health Hospital in the amount of $290 million. With that, we will open the public hearing on this item.
Commissioners, hello. Joel Van Der Veen, 1650 Farnham Street. This is a public hearing for the purposes of satisfying Code Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by hospital authorities number 2 and 3 for the benefit of the Nebraska Methodist Health System and the Nebraska Methodist Hospital, the parent and the hospital, for the purpose of refinancing their outstanding 2008 bonds along with some new money projects at their 84th and Dodge campus and their 192nd and Dodge campus for the women's hospital. I don't have any comments in favor or against, but would be happy to answer questions if there are any. And we also have Tom Easerman from Nebraska Methodist Health System here to answer any particular questions about the project.
Okay, with that, public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to comment during the public hearing? Seeing none. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Mr. Van Der Veen, is it?
Yes.
This is a refinancing of a 2008 issue, is that correct?
Yes, the majority of the proceeds approximately, well, the combined issue by hospital authority number 2 and 3 would be in an amount not to exceed $290 million. The current expected amount is less than that, but approximately. $200 million will be required to refinance the 2008 bonds that are outstanding issued by the same authorities and approximately $40 million split between the two authorities for new money projects.
And just because I won't have the opportunity to go back to law school and learn much bond law, I'm going to take an opportunity here to talk to an expert for a second. What is the purpose for the refinancing?
Saving, save, cost savings.
Is the interest rate different or something on...
Yeah, there's, the interest rate will be, there'll be savings from the refinancing. The 2008 bonds are callable 10 years after they were issued and so this will be what's known as an advanced refunding. Bond proceeds will be placed into escrow to buy U.S. Treasury securities to discharge the outstanding 2008 bonds for, for a period of about two and a half years. And, you know, the particular costs of the refinancing will be determined at the time the bonds are priced. The, the hospital authorities are scheduled to meet on May 21st to approve the bond resolutions and we're, we're hoping for a bond sale and pricing at the beginning of June. That, so at that time, the amount, particular amount of the savings will be known. But yes, it's, interest rates are better, there are some structuring advantages. It's hoped that the reserve fund won't be required and that will provide some savings as well.
And these entities are tax-exempt entities, is that correct?
Yes, both Nebraska Methodist Health System and the Nebraska Methodist Hospital are 511(c)(3) organizations, tax-exempt, eligible for tax, to receive the benefits of borrowing tax-exempt under, under the, the Internal Revenue Code. The issuance of tax-exempt bonds requires a governmental issuer, which is the purpose for which the hospital authorities are established and they serve in that role just as a conduit. The Nebraska Methodist and the hospital will be responsible entirely for bond repayment. I probably should have pointed out to you that, that the county is in no way obligated with respect to these bonds. The public hearing and, and your approval is, is required because you're the highest elected representatives of the relevant governmental issuer here, in this case, the authorities.
And in addition to refinancing the outstanding bond issue from 2008, did I understand you to say there's some new construction going to be undertaken?
There is, yes. And if you want to talk about the details of that, I'd ask Mr. Easerman to describe that. It's, well, it's improvements to both the main hospital campus, I refer to it as the main hospital campus at 84th and Dodge, as well as some expansion at the women's hospital at 192nd. So I...
Briefly, I, we're always interested in economic development, but if we could have a brief overview of what you're actually doing in terms of the new construction.
Good morning, Tom Easerman, Methodist Health System, 8511 West Dodge Road. Quick summary, on the women's hospital campus, we have about $6.5 million with the projects. Primarily, we have a couple of shelled areas. When we built the hospital, we didn't finish them out, so we have a couple of patient rooms and an OR suite that we want to finish out. And then it's time to expand our NICU. We're going to expand it from 28 beds, which you currently have the 51 beds. And then down on the 84th Street campus, we have about $31 million.
Can you, can you give the acronyms for NICU?
The Neonatal Intensive Care Units.
And how many beds? I couldn't hear what you said.
28 beds to 51.
To 51, okay, thank you.
Then on the 84th Street campus, we have about $30 million with the projects slated right now. We have a big project going on right now, expanding our surgical suites and so we're going to take a few, about $5 million of the proceeds to supplement that. Most of the surgery project is being paid for by fundraising, but there's a little bit that we're going to use. We've got about $8 million in our physical plant that we've identified, updating some chillers, electrical systems, generators that we need to keep current with codes. Our ER, if anyone has been to our emergency room, we're pretty landlocked there and so when the surgery project finishes, it's going to create some space in the hospital to do some other work. And so expanding our ER is one of the projects that we've highlighted. That will probably have a fundraising component as well, but this is to help supplement that as well. So there's some other big pieces of equipment in there, but that's kind of a highlight of what we've got going for the next few years.
In this project, are you purchasing additional land?
No, we have all the land that we need. Just kind of refilling in the, inside the walls.
Well, it sounds like an exciting project. Good luck with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I might ask one. Just curious, the difference in the interest rate from 10 years ago, couple, point and a half?
Actually, I, I don't have those figures at hand. I'm the lawyer, not the financial analyst. So I know there are savings. We could get you those figures.
No, it's okay. I was just curious. I mean, the rates that we see today, you know, our parents didn't even see those kind of rates, so it's pretty helpful to your project and development there and Methodist does a great job. And your occupancy probably has to be as high as possibly can be, I would think, at this time.
Yes, we've been very busy, but when the women's hospital opened, it also gave us an opportunity on the 84th Street to convert a lot of our double rooms to single rooms. And so we, you know, creating a better environment for our patients. So while we have seen a little bit of an uptick in business the last few months, it was part of it by design to kind of put our number of beds at a more comfortable level for the patients.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, we will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's motion to second. Everyone, please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll now move to Item 7, that's committees, discussions, and actions. Item A is finance committee and the budget report, Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh.
I think we'll be up in room 903 and I don't know if we have an executive session today. We do not. So if, well, she's taking it, no.
Commissioners, that's, that was a last-minute change. We were supposed to, but that's going to be held over.
Okay, that's always...
So we do not. Okay, so my thought is, if it's okay, my thought would be that we'd go up there 15 minutes after this meeting. Claire, is that...
Sir.
go up there 15 minutes after this meeting. Claire, is that okay with you and Mike and all of us? So we'll meet in room 903 once this meeting adjourns within 15 minutes. And we've got several important, Joe's going to brief us on the shortfall, a very good briefing that we should certainly listen to and hopefully resolve. And we have the Engineering Office, Election Commissioner. One of the big ones today is Corrections, and I think we have the Health, the Health Department, Joe? And 911, Health Department also.
The Electrical Commissioner, Engineer, Health Department, Communications, and Corrections.
So we'll be up there for a little while, so that's it.
And if I may, are you students back there? Would you like to identify where you're from and who you are?
Can you come, can you come to the mic?
And while you're coming, just for your information, the meeting we're going to have is our Finance Committee Budget Hearing, and they're many times more interesting than this. And it is an open meeting. All of our, whenever there's four of us, whenever there's more than three, we have to publish open meeting notices and operate under the open meeting laws. So please tell us about yourselves.
We're from Omaha, Brownell Talbot. I'm Powers Diggis.
I'm Dylan Witt.
I'm Jonathan Brianna.
I'm Abah.
We're here for American Government Project.
We are very glad that you're here.
Thank you, sir.
And glad to see the engagement of the young people in our community, so thank you.
Do you have a question?
After this meeting, would we be able to get signatures that we attended?
No. No.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work that out after we adjourn.
I think personally, a picture might be better, not just signatures, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, your light, is it on? Oh, light, okay. Mr. Morgan, is that?
That's it.
Okay. With that, we will go on to item G and Human Resources. Item one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service, which you all have. Item two is the Weekly CEO Report on Staff and Assault.
Nothing to report.
Item three is Legislative Issues. What I'd like to do is take item B first and then go back to A. That's the Resolution Supporting Legislative Bill 294, Adopting Human Trafficking Victims Civil Remedy Act, to change provisions relating to service of process, evidence, sexual assault, and et cetera. Is there, what's the will of the board on that item? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I believe, Marcos, could you give us an update on where that bill is procedurally?
Sure, Marcos S. Martin, Douglas County Administration. LB 294 was placed on select file last week, late last week, and now has moved to ENR, so it's toward the end of its lifespan in the legislature. And however, yesterday evening, there was an amendment filed to it, so that has yet to be adopted. So that's, that's the status on that bill.
So it is on, move to final read.
Is on select file right now with, with an ENR that's, that's pending from last week.
Just procedurally, this bill's on final read. It's, you know, the bus has left the station. You know, I would recommend that we move on.
Commissioner Morgan, your, oh, light was on, okay. Again, what's the will of the board?
To lay it over, not vote on it, I guess, not take a resolution position on the final read bill.
The only, if I could?
You can.
The only...
Well, let me go back. Is that a motion?
That's a motion, and I believe the...
Motion to lay over, and there is a second. Commissioner Boil.
The only reason I would say, to ask that we vote on it is that it was requested by Commissioner Borgerson in her absence, I think, just out of respect to her.
Well, another reason, I guess, I'd like to have the opportunity to hear her thoughts on it, and as long as it's on final read, we're not missing anything here, so.
The other bill, send a message that we're not supportive of it, being that it was here. I'm wondering if...
No.
I know that's what we heard on one of the bills that we didn't support on, was the Woodman Bill.
Well, let me say, we do got the light system, so we, you can use your lights, so I can see where you're at.
There we go.
We all want to talk at once.
Okay.
Since Mary Ann's not here to beat us up.
Commissioner Boil, you through?
Well, yeah, I guess so.
Commissioner Morgan, you through?
Well, I'm just wondering if we should, I mean, what would be the harm if we did say we're supporting it? What's the harm in that?
Well, that, no harm, no foul, either way. I don't think that we are being asked to do this by, by any, you know, public entity, and I, you know, I would like to hear the reasoning that, you know, obviously Commissioner Borgerson has some for this, and I'd like to offer her the courtesy of, you know, being able to address that. We're not taking a position, opposition to it, we're just laying it over.
I would say, I haven't talked to her, but I know she's appointed by the governor to the Human Trafficking Task Force, so I would strongly assume that her rationale is something that they've been working towards in that respect. So, I mean, I talked to her, her appointment on there, I'm assuming it's something that she would want the board to support.
That she would want to support?
Oh, yeah, I would assume strongly.
And what are your thoughts on it?
Personally, I, you know, I think you support it. There's nothing, it's down the train, it's going to go, I think, you know, it does her help to be on record for it, and it is a major issue.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, would you be opposed if I did a friendly amendment saying, or change it to supporting the bill? I mean, do you see any harm in that? I'm just listening to Chris and his thoughts.
I understand. I, I wouldn't, I'd feel a little more comfortable if I could hear Commissioner Borgerson's thoughts on this. I mean, I understand what Commissioner Rogers is, is saying, but this is, you know, an issue of interest to Commissioner Borgerson, and obviously, if she's been appointed by the governor to serve on the Human Trafficking Commission, there's probably more to this than, you know, what we see in this five-line description that we've got of the bill. And, you know, I think it would behoove us to go into this fully informed. I don't think that anybody's got any opposition to this. It's just a matter of getting the best information that we can, and she's probably the person who can provide that to us.
All right, let me, Chris, is it okay, bias?
Sure.
Do you think the final reading, though, is going to occur this week?
I do not. It'll have to lay over for a certain period of time, and they're involved with the budget process right now, so it's probably next week before it comes to final read anyhow.
Hi. Well, I don't know much about LB 294.
Laura, you need to state your name.
Oh, sorry, Laura McCormick, 7414 Valley. Anyway, I believe it just increases the penalties for pandering and solicitation of prostitutes. Quite frankly, I don't know why we need to have lengthy discussion about why we, why wouldn't we want to support that, but I don't know. Maybe you know more than I, Commissioner Kavanaugh, and you're my elected representative.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Christian, do it.
Thank you. What's the amendment? These things are moving target. I'm not sure what we're voting on. There's no one here to explain what we're voting on, and now we're told it was amended last night. Can anybody tell me what the amendment is? Can anybody tell me what the bill is that we're supporting? I, I don't agree with the philosophy that we have to take a stand on every bill. And, and when the comment was made that the legislature made assumptions about us on a bill that we didn't take a stand on, I'm even curious about that. Do they really care what we think? Are they really waiting to do anything until they hear what we say? And I just don't think they are. I don't think that it's imperative that we take a stand on everything, and we don't even know what we're taking a stand on here. We don't even know what the amendment is. I'm, I'm not comfortable supporting a bill when I don't even know what it says. Thank you.
Commissioner Boil.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Duda, except that I think the time they were, there was some confusion about, or bringing us up as being neutral or silent was on the Woodman Bill, and that's when that vote was taken, and I think that's probably the only reason why they, they're really needling us to say, you know, where are you? So I think that's probably why, with all due respect, if they're listening, but anyway. I think the other thing, too, is we take ourselves pretty seriously on this legislative, these legislative matters, because, you know, we're one of 93 counties, and so, and there's a whole lot of other governmental bodies involved in a lot of things, including the county attorneys and the sheriffs and everybody, and police and everybody who's involved in these issues. But, you know, I, originally, I thought it'd be better just to, to vote on it, to, out of respect for Commissioner Borgerson, but I'm willing to let it lay over for another week and let her have her say what it is, and she's going to have to explain what this is. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
Marcos, do you have any comment? You don't have to, I'm just asking, I know you. Okay, then if it's not going to come up for final reading, then we'll lay it over for the week.
Okay. I just want to add, Commissioner Boil's comments, that they, they are listening, and the comment about women was made to try to help that bill move because it was stuck. So we would try, we were used to try to make it move, so they're, they're listening.
Commissioner, I don't mean to break your heart, but they're not listening.
A few, a few influential people are.
Senator Har was.
So with that, we'd like to go to item 3A, and that's the Resolution Supporting Legislative Bill 605. This was an amendment 1010 to change classification of penalties, punishment, probation, parole provisions, and provisions relating to criminal records and restitution. This, let me lay this context before we get into this. There was a conversation that Marcos and I had this morning with the Kelly Farm. My understanding right now is there is a hundred-plus-page amendment that is about to be filed on that, and that the concerns that the board has noted was in that amendment. I know Director Foxall is here, so if the board asks questions, I don't know what he wants to comment on it.
Excuse me, Commissioner, it's my resolution, I have my light on.
Okay. And then I'll get, I just wanted to state, so you all know the record that was, that was mentioned by the lobbyists this morning. And with that, I will turn it over. Commissioner Morgan, is this a light from the past? Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
The bill that we're talking about is a moving target, it's work in progress. And we've discussed it briefly before, and we've heard from Dr. Foxall and County Attorney Klein and others regarding this. I know that people on our staff, Marcos and others, have worked hard on the resolutions that Commissioner Rogers just referenced. But that said, when we drafted this resolution, the bill was in a different form, and we were asking for changes in it that at that time were not adopted. Marcos, could you give us the latest update on the form of those resolutions and where they are procedurally now, please? The form of those amendments, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner, Marcos, from the Douglas County Administration. I will say that what we understand is there were going to be some amendments that were going to be helpful for Douglas County. They were incorporated to Senator Seidler's amendment that has now been filed. It is a lengthy amendment, and we are reviewing that with our lobbyists. That's what Commissioner Rogers just said a little bit earlier. And so we will review that at length and see how ultimately it impacts Douglas County. Is that a response? That's...
Yes. These amendments, at least the ones that we've been proposing, deal with a couple of our concerns of the bill in its original form, is that right?
Yes, you are correct.
Outline those concerns and the, what the amendments do relative to those concerns, please.
I think, I wonder if Dr. Foxall is better to answer that, but I will say that there have been some more favorable, some more favorable language added into the bill. For example, the reimbursement language was added into the bill, and some additional language as far as how we calculate our average daily population, how it increased, you know, how we would calculate an increase to our average daily population. That was also an amendment that we incorporated into the bill that would be favorable for us. That's, various items kind of like that have now been included into Senator Seidler's amendment that we are reviewing.
And Commissioners Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, there's language in the amendments that refer to when sentencing inmates. How, since there is no more minimum, talking about how, putting in language that they look at the maximum sentencing, so more inmates that are sentenced to lesser amounts of time will spend that sentence at the prison rather than the jail. As the current bill was written, there was a high risk that a lot of those inmates who are sentenced to lower periods of time would end up spending those, that time at the jail. And our hope is, with the amendment now, those will go actually to the state pen rather than the jail.
So when I mentioned that this is a work in progress, these amendments were filed, I believe, last evening, is that correct? And they come on the heels of a bill that's now 160 pages long, and has been through many, many, many drafts, and probably will go through some more. The point is, in its current form with the amendments, it has less of an adverse economic impact on Douglas County, which was our concern, informed by Dr. Foxall's estimation that it could cost us in excess of $1 million in its original form through housing prisoners at the Correctional Center who heretofore would have been the state's responsibility in the prison system. So we're moving in the right direction, but it is a moving target. And so what I would recommend, rather than pass this resolution to a bill that's not in that form anymore, is that we give perhaps a sense of the board instruction to our legislative lobbyists that we are interested in pursuing this bill to improve it from a fiscal point of view for Douglas County's liability relative to the changes that would be implemented as a result of the changes in the sentencing guidelines, and increased funding, which is included in these amendments, to defray some of the anticipated costs to Douglas County of housing increased numbers of inmates at our Correctional Center as a result of the operation of the bill. This would not be a formal resolution, this would be, you know, kind of direction to our legislative lobbyists that they have the authority to go forward and negotiate along those lines.
Continuing off that sentiment of Commissioner Kavanaugh, I, I agree, and I would like the board to consider, so in the conversation this morning, we had language that says, in support of a formal resolution, that says we support efforts to mitigate physical impacts to Douglas County.
The fiscal impacts?
Yes.
Yes.
And that would give us a broad enough range with them to act, and I think it, your spirit, so if the board is agreement to that, I'd, I'd like us to make that actionable.
I'd support that.
We got a second, Commissioner?
Second.
No, we, a motion and a second. We already have a motion on the floor.
I think those are all good ideas. I want to be sure if Mark Foxall has anything he wants to add to it. I wanted to be sure he had the opportunity to...
Well, PJ, hold on. Let me, let me be official. My understanding is, we haven't appropriately handled B, so...
We made a motion to lay it over for one week and never voted on it.
My understanding is, we need to do that.
Oh, okay.
Let me, let's handle that. So with that, I'd like to ask for a vote on laying over item B for one week.
Item A.
No, B, we never voted on.
Oh, we never voted on.
Never voted on. We made a motion and didn't vote.
So with that, would everybody please vote on B? Motion passes. Now, with that said, let me recap. So this, the item for A was to, the suggestion was to make a formal motion supporting efforts to mitigate the physical impacts to Douglas County. Commissioner Kavanaugh, motion second by craft. Commissioner Morgan, discuss. It's on you.
And the comment, I think the comments were very good on that bill, agree. I just thought, if Mark does want to speak, fine, but if you don't have anything you want to add to it, no problem. I just wanted to be respectful.
I see him running down here.
I saw him start to.
And I said, okay, here we go.
Wind burst and wind coming down.
Good morning, Commissioners Mark Foxall, Director of Douglas County Department of Corrections. I think that's a wise move, given the amendments that continue to come on this piece of legislation. One just came, more likely to come, so we need to continue to work, review those amendments to mitigate the impact on the county and taxpayers.
And Mark, I know you're watching it closely. If there are some things that you want to bring to the board, please let our chairperson know, so that we're listening to some of your concerns and trying to be supportive and helpful to work with you.
I most certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Or is that a holdover?
Well, I was, if you'd made a formal motion there, I was seconding that, so we could move on this.
No, I had, it's you making it, and Commissioner Craft seconding.
Okay, I'm making that then, I think Commissioner Craft has seconded that.
Who's, Commissioner Kavanaugh's light is on, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Craft.
Yes, Marcos, how many more days are left in this session in Lincoln?
Too many.
I think maybe 16?
Fifteen. Okay, that's close enough. Okay, then I have, for the young people from Brownell Talbot, you can prove you were here, because we do broadcast these on YouTube. So this afternoon, you know, you can, using your technology, make a clip of it. The other thing, we won't sign your paper till after the finance committee.
Take a moment.
In room 903. Okay, so I'm being honory. I'm done.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, there is a mo, oh, okay, what I see, Commissioner Duda.
I think my light is on, too.
It's not showing. On me, okay, Commissioner Boyle.
I've had a request to speak since about 8:15, but anyway.
Okay.
What I would like to do, I think it's important, I think this is probably, it's a very important issue, and I think we have failed to explain to the people in the audience, the students, I think, and to the taxpayers, what this is all about. This is, this bill was introduced to bail the state out of having to build a new prison. We don't have enough beds in the state prisons in Tecumseh and in Lincoln. I think we're at 150% capacity, something outrageous, and there's no interest in building more jails. I don't know of anybody who does, maybe there's a few, but I don't know of anyone. And so the effort has been to shift the prisoners, to change all the sentencing, and to shift, to change the rules, and to send people who were, who would be sentenced to the state penitentiary to local communities. And we've seen this movie before, and it gets an X-rating in my book, okay? And I'll tell you why. The last governor, Dave Heineman, remember that name, Dave Heineman, left Douglas County holding a bag of over $15 million in unpaid hotel fees at our director's facility. You taxpayers have foot, have foot the local bill, your property tax dollars. When you hear all these state officials saying, you know, I, all I've heard is that people want property tax dollars cut, and then they support bills that shift the cost from the state to the county. Now, county government is not an independent body. We are, we are nothing more than an arm of the state, and I've had meetings with Governor Heineman in the past, and other governors, and so forth, and I remind them that when they tell us to cut your spending, that we only spend money that you tell us, that he tells us to do. If he tells us to arrest, you know, a nun jaywalking and send her to jail for 30 days, and that's it, that's what we have to do. And so we have no discretion, none. Okay. To add insult to injury, our county attorney has to pay a filing fee every time he files a criminal case, so we spend about $700,000 a year paying the clerk of the district court, and that money goes to judges' pensions, for starters, there's another article in the paper on that today. But all this money is really an attempt to shift the cost from the state to the local bodies, and it raises property taxes. We're gonna discuss in this budget meeting, if you're so fortunate to attend, a $4 million shortfall, largely because of stuff like this. And I think what we need to do, and I'd like to see our lobbyists do, because I don't trust the state, the fund to reimburse the counties for shifting all of these prisoners to us is a, is a pittance. It is kind of like transferring students to Brownell and saying, we'll pay Brownell $5 a year to educate them. I think you pay more than, your parents and you pay more than $5 a year for your education, it's an excellent education. I would like to see us negotiate a contract, have in this bill, that the state of Nebraska must negotiate a contract with each individual county to house prisoners at a cost mutually agreed upon, and then if they don't agree to pay us, it costs us $97 a day to house a prisoner, if they don't agree to pay us that, then we're not taking your prisoners. But right now, we are sitting ducks, we are gonna have to raise property taxes to support this kind of legislation, and this is just one bill, this just goes on and on. So that's what we're facing, and to the taxpayers and the audience, you know, this is a monster bill, there probably are some good parts to it, as you heard, there are amendments are flying left and right, we have 100-page amendments added daily, it's a moving target, as Commissioner Kavanaugh said, so well, so well put. But the bottom line is, I think what we need to do is ask Mr. Kelly to get, try to get an amendment, instead of this money thing where, you know, we have a fund of $250,000 or something to pay the counties, that doesn't, we can't turn on the lights for that. So, we need to have something that's constructive, and in the past, when the state had a pool of funds, which they did in the past, and that's where Governor Heineman decided that, he just decided that the legislative state law didn't say that, so he refused to pay us anything amazing. But anyhow, that's what he decided, and so he didn't pay us anything at all. And so what happened was, there was a pool of $2 or $3 million statewide to pay for costs of people who are arrested under state charges and are held in our county facility. And so what happened was, there was a rush to file a claim. You know, it would be like, I don't know, you can come to your own conclusion of what would be a good example, but there's a pot of money, and you have 93 counties, and we've all got prisoners, and Sarpy and Lancaster and Douglas have a lot of them, Hall County and so forth, and so as soon as the bell rings, January 1st, we all rush to Lincoln and file a claim and hope we get ours there first, and if they run out of money, tough. That's what this bill is all about, and I think what we need to do, as I said earlier, is try to, try to get a simple amendment, take out this money, forget it, we're never gonna get paid, we're gonna get held up and robbed again, and I wish they were listening, but I know they aren't. I think we need to negotiate a contract with, that says, provide that, we will negotiate a contract in the future with the state to house their prisoners at a mutually agreed cost. We can lease them parts of our building, they'll pay for it, the state taxpayers will, through their sources of revenue, which aren't property taxes, and we will get our, we'll get paid what it costs. That's what I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I appreciate the approach of this motion. I am not ready to take a stand for, against this bill, it is way too complicated, and way too fluid, too changing every day, and, but I like the approach that we are simply trying to safeguard the fiscal interests of Douglas County. I am comfortable supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Craft, and Commissioner Craft, I've had a note that we are in day 75 of day, of 90-day session.
Okay, thank you. And if I may address the students again, when Commissioner Boyle mentioned Mr. Kelly, that's our lobbyist, I didn't know if you knew that, when you hear people complain about the property taxes being too high, remember that most of the property taxes go to school, second, the city of Omaha, which includes a garbage collection fee, and if you were to factor out, in 2001, if you were to factor out the garbage collection portion of the property taxes, we would not have been, as a state, but that's only in Nebraska, only in Omaha that we collect garbage, as a state, we would drop from eighth highest to 24th from the top. So, you have to remember that, that taxes are not even lines like you see in the ceiling, it's not an even grid, it's a parabolic table, where most of us, it was $1, I'm sorry, it was one penny difference to drop from eighth place to ninth place in 2001, when I did my research. Now, I emphasize "year" because if I were to do it today, it'd be very different, I'm sure. The other thing is, when people complain about property taxes locally, bring to mind that it's not all our duty, as Commissioner Boyle said, blame your state senators. And it's not $4 million, I believe I was told it was $5 million, which is $2 mil on your taxes, which is approximately 10% of the Douglas County portion that we are going to have, we could have a shortfall for. And if this bill were to pass and add another million, it would be 11% or so. So, I'm glad we can educate the kids. And by the way, Commissioner Boyle, for a small fee, does talk to classes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Craft, and that's the non-Schoolhouse Rock version of how government functions. With that, we have a motion and a second on a motion to support efforts to mitigate physical impacts on, to Douglas County on this bill. With that said, seeing no further discussion, will everyone please vote?
Commissioner Duda, it's supporting, the proposal is to support language or motions that would mitigate the financial impact, so I don't think the motion is to support passage of the bill, per se, just to do whatever it takes to mitigate any negative financial impacts of the bill.
With that, we have item C. Is there any other legislation any commissioners want to mission? Seeing none, we'll go to item four, resolution to accept Cygnus' proposal to administer the county's full insured long-term disability plan and FMA policy. Patrick, do you have anything else you want to add?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, second. Seeing none, everyone please vote.
Motion passes.
Again, we have no need now for an executive session. With that, we will begin the finance meeting at 10:15.
All righty. With that, is there most to adjourn? Commissioner Craft, motion passes.